His brother had open heart surgery.
Did he really?
He's a very good friend of my son and daughter.
So which, does, how many brothers does he have?
Yes.
So Patrick did?
So Patrick had.
His wife is Rachel, right?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
So Erin had a cocktail party because Greg came up from Miami, so she got these guys together. They haven't really seen each other. And Rachel and Pat came, which was great for him. He looks like he's lost his mind because he's walking a mile a day.
Good.
And he's serious about it.
Being happy.
And Rachel, it was just good for her to get out and see her friends and stuff.
Good.
She said it was the one night they didn't hit baseball.
Yeah, yeah, that's true. He's, they're good, uh, he's such a good guy. They're such a great family.
Yeah. Erin, uh, my Erin and Rachel met in preschool when they were three and they have been fast friends ever since.
Really?
I don't think there's any additions to the agenda or anything like that, so we should be able to go through. There's like a number of items, but not, nothing's.
So we'll do their recognition first, right?
We do that as part of the superintendent's report.
Got it, got it, okay. I can't re, I couldn't remember.
I've been, yeah, we stopped watching. I'm trying to think where, I think she was, I mean, the last one I saw, she was in Washington with FDR.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're good.
They're good, they're really good. So much of my history was fun, it was romantic.
Yeah.
Yeah. The same parts always going on all over. And then the Austrian area and the, I don't know, all this stuff, I don't know.
Yeah.
It's always interesting to see.
Well, when you watch it though, it informs you why the Norwegians were founding founders of NATO, you know, and then the Swedes and the Finns, who my mother always called the reindeer eaters. There's contempt amongst any group. I don't care what you are, somebody is like, there's always a good wolf that's not. But on the other hand, Norway goes further with Russia. No, well, Norway goes, touches Russia in the north. Now they're fighting over the, I didn't always have any Americans that true that is. Yeah, all those rare minerals that are north, north, that's melting now. Oh, they didn't, yeah. Oh, great.
Are we having discussion on this tonight?
Okay, perfect.
The handbook revisions? Well, I just, I'll ask, maybe I'll, maybe I'll ask her offline. So, so what I didn't see in here, so what they, what they took out as any symptom of COVID is not a reason to stay home. It's only fever, vomit, you know, it's back to the basics, which I can understand, maybe. But what, what I, what I, what I don't see that I think should be in there is a recommendation that if you do have one of those things, to test. Do we have that? So, so, you know, and I speak from the most recent experience that we tested. So, so we're saying, it, without it being in there, and I, I appreciate the question, without it being in there, we're saying, the, the only reason to not send your kid is fever of 100.4 or vomiting or, you know, one other thing, right?
Yeah, except that we don't want you to send a kid if he's got cancer. So we don't want to just send him, I mean, that's it. I, I didn't see it that way. It should say, some serious.
It does. Well. Twenty twenty-one listed all, twenty twenty-one listed all the symptoms of COVID. fatigue, tiredness, paws, chills, right?
I'm gonna start.
This is twenty-one. Twenty-two.
I'm gonna start assembling. Can I ask everyone to take their seats so we can get started? We have a lot of important people to greet. One of the few meetings you can have delicious refreshments while you listen to us.
Okay, I, I think I'm gonna start. We are going to call this meeting to order and that would require a roll call.
Ms. Shawsey.
Aye.
Mr. Callahan.
President.
Ms. Beebe.
Present.
Ms. Peter Arslana.
Here.
Ms. Kastenberger.
Here.
Thank you very much. And now if you'll join us in the pledge of allegiance. Where's the flag? Okay. I have to look this way. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. First item of business is adoption of the agenda as presented is their motion.
So moved.
Second? It's been moved and seconded that we adopt the agenda. This requires a roll call vote.
Ms. Shawsey.
Aye.
Mr. Callahan.
Aye.
Ms. Beebe.
Aye.
Ms. Peter Arslana.
Aye.
Ms. Kastenberger.
Aye.
Thank you. And we now move on to the superintendent's report.
Good evening. Good evening, President Shawsey, Vice President Callahan, distinguished board members, Treasurer Zeman. Very excited tonight. Obviously, this group came for the policy conversation we're gonna have for the next hour.
Absolutely.
Just kidding. This is so exciting. And as an educator, you, you know, getting in your first year, you never realize how fast the time is gonna go. And so just talking to so many people about their, their time here, it's, it's just, it flies by and we're excited that it's their time to choose to move on. But we are, we would be remiss if we didn't say we have a lot of big shoes to fill here in the district. So exciting but bittersweet moments. First, I am going to share, um, so I do have a lot of recognitions tonight, and so I'm just gonna ask if our audience would stay to the end, full end of the superintendent's report before moving around so everyone's recognition could be heard. I'd appreciate it if you could do that. Every year, we recognize students who have been selected to receive the Mary Louise Beach Scholarship. Colin Hunt and Teagan McYan are the recipients of the 2022 Mary Louise Beach Scholarship Award. Beginning in 1969, a thousand dollar scholarship has been received from the estate of Winifred B. Young in memory of her sister, Mary Louise Beach, a teacher of English at Lakewood High School from 1919 to 1941. The thousand dollar scholarship is to be paid to a graduate or divided between two graduates. The faculty committee, consisting of a high school principal and two staff members, selects the scholarship winners from the faculty nomination and student applications submitted on or before April 1st of each school year. The nominees are to be of excellent academic promise, outstanding character and citizenship, and in need of financial assistance. The purpose of the scholarship money is to just assist graduates during that first year of college. Let me tell you about this year's beach scholarship recipients. Colin has a GPA of 3.862. He plans to attend the University of Akron to pursue a major in either criminology, criminal justice, or political science. After obtaining his bachelor's degree, Colin's goal is to obtain his Ohio Peace Officer Certificate and enter the law enforcement profession and workforce in northeast Ohio. Colin has been very active during his four years at Lakewood High School. He is a member of the National Honor Society and Model United States, I'm sorry, United Nations, and is a member of the track and field team. He participated in the Lakewood Ranger Marching Band and the pep band. Colin also served as a fresh start mentor for incoming freshmen at the high school. Our other beach scholarship recipient is Teagan McYan. Teagan has a 4.545 GPA. She plans to attend Carnegie Mellon University and to major in one of their stellar business programs. She has been equally involved. Teagan has been a member of cross-country and indoor and outdoor track and field teams for all four years. She has also been an H2O volunteer and participated in the Home Alone program. Colin and Teagan, would you come forward to receive your certificates and your scholarship checks from Board President Mrs. Shawsey?
Just congratulations. You bring so much pride to us and I know to all the teachers that have been with both of you through the years and they see these fine young people that are out there, gonna be out in the world making a difference. It's awesome. So thank you very much. You have a recognition from us and then your scholarship checks. And I would just like you to, if, who's here with you and maybe introduce your family?
Hi, I'm Teagan. My mom's here, my dad, Seamus, my brother, Maggie, my sister, and then my Nana and Papa are here. Thank you very much.
Hello, I am Colin and today with me are also my dad and my mom. So thank you, everyone.
Come on, let's get a picture real quick. This night doesn't happen every night.
This feels like it's happening.
Nana and Papa too.
It was the email version of the mail.
I love when we see graduates because you know the world's a better place when these two are heading off into it. So we, I'm excited. Congratulations. Next, we will recognize our district retirees. And as, so first, I'm gonna ask the board to come up front, please. And as I call your name, please start with President Shawsey and receive your gift. And then you're gonna walk and just stand over by Ms. Nab because we will do a full group photo. So don't be skipping out on the picture. So we have over thirteen tonight to, that were able to attend in no specific order. So first up, Nancy Early. Nancy Early began her career in Lakewood City Schools during the 1988-1989 school year as a supervisor of nutrition service and dietitian. Nancy joined Lakewood after working as a corporate dietitian for Northwestern Service Corporation, then working as a dietitian for the Department of Justice Affairs Development Center, and finally completing her work in the restaurant industry. Throughout her long storied career serving the students of Lakewood, Nancy has also participated and presented educational, educational regarding proper nutrition, I'm sorry, regarding proper nutrition, participate in district retreats and negotiations, and tirelessly worked to present student menus that are diverse and nutritional. Nancy earned a Bachelor's of Art in Dietetics from the University of Akron and is a registered dietitian with the American Dietitian Association. Thank you, Nancy. Diane Castellic. Students and colleagues at Lakewood's Career Technical Education Department send a debt of gratitude for the work Diane has done on behalf of students and staff. But this is just one part of Diane's teaching career with Lakewood. Diane joined the district as a special education teacher at the former Emerson Middle School at the start of the 1993-1994 school year, working with students who have multiple disabilities. This start to her teaching career happened after Diane earned a master's degree in special education from Cleveland State University. Diane remained at Emerson Middle School until she was appointed the Special Education Work Study Coordinator at Lakewood's, Lakewood High's CTE program. For the 2003-2004 school year, Diane took on a new CTE role as the VOSE coordinator at LHS, a position she held until her retirement this year. Before choosing to spend her entire teaching career in Lakewood, Diane earned a Bachelor's in Fine Arts from the Cleveland Institute of Art with a focus on medical illustration. Thank you. Sandy Kozelka. Completing both undergraduate and graduate degrees in education from Baldwin Wallace and her administrative license from Ashland University, Sandy joined the Lakewood City Schools first as a substitute teacher during the 90-91 school year, eventually becoming a long-term substitute teacher at Lincoln Elementary School. At the start of 1991-1992 school year, Sandy was hired as a kindergarten teacher at Roosevelt Elementary School, where Sandy was selected as a finalist for Outstanding First Year Teacher. In 1995, Sandy traveled to Hayes Elementary to again assume a role of primary teacher. Along with relishing in her role as a teacher, Sandy has also worn the hat of elementary school facilitator, elementary coach, and elementary principal, always choosing to teach and lead in whatever job she embraced. This commitment is recognized as parents have applauded her dedication to her students' learning and growing. While students and staff are grateful for her compassion and caring for all, in all her years, Sandy continues to demonstrate why education is her passion and her calling. Thank you. Barb Lynch. Barb joined the Lakewood team in 1985 as a math teacher at the high school after completing seven years as a math instructor at Lake Catholic High School. After having to endure a reduction in force at the conclusion of the 86-87 school year, Barb was recalled to teach OWA at the former Horace Mann Middle School at the start of the next school year. In 1995, Barb assumed the role of OWA coordinator at Lakewood High School until she ultimately returned to Horace Mann Middle School. In addition to her teaching role, Barb was also actively involved with the district as a summer school teacher, assistant cinema advisor, mentor, and trainer, earning a Bachelor's of Arts in Grade 7 to 12 Mathematics Education and Master's of Arts in Mathematics, both from John Carroll University. Barb retires from Garfield Middle School as an eighth grade math teacher. Thank you. Dolores Martin. Before getting hired to a teacher's contract for the 1985-1986 school year, Dolores Martin proved her abilities as a business educator, as a business educator, when she accepted Lakewood High School long-term subbing teaching assignment in 1984. This long-term teaching assignment occurred right after Dolores finished her college degree in teaching. Throughout her career with the district, Dolores has worn many hats. She served on various committees, was a Saturday School Supervisor, district curriculum and course of study writer, mentor and office test proctor for adult support staff candidates seeking employment with the Lakewood City Schools. Along with earning nearly sixty semester hours of college credit of her own professional development, Dolores earned her Bachelor's Degree in Comprehensive Business Education from Ashland University. Dolores retires from the Career Technical Education Program at Lakewood High School. Thank you. Donna Miller. In September 1990, Donna Miller joined the ranks of the Finance Department, working as Central Office Finance Assistant for the district. While working in the Payroll Department during the 1990s, Donna continually stepped up while this department was short-staffed as a result of financial constraints and when a supervisor of payroll could not immediately be replaced. In January 1998, Donna was appointed in the Finance Lead position for payroll. However, Donna held this position for less than a year because she was then appointed to the Payroll Supervisor August 1st, 1998. After a service of over thirty-two years, Donna starts her next career in retirement on December 1st, 2022. Thank you. Jahan Peters. Also serving Garfield's middle school students as a math teacher, Jahan Peters joined the Lakewood team on August 27, 1987. After her college graduation, Jahan first began her teaching career as a substitute teacher in various districts, including Lakewood. As a result of her demonstrated abilities in Lakewood, Jahan was hired to complete a long-term subbing position at the former Emerson Middle School. After completion of that assignment, Jahan's career transitioned into a teaching contract at Emerson until the opening of Lakewood's two new middle schools. At that time, Jahan continued her role as math teacher at Garfield Middle School, where she remained until her retirement at the end of the school year. Jahan received her Bachelor's Degree in Elementary Education from The Ohio State University and a Master's Degree in Curriculum Instruction from Cleveland State University. Thank you. Vicki Plute. After teaching for one year in downtown Cleveland as a business teacher at MTI Business School, Vicki Plute joined our district at the start of the 1985-1986 school year as a business education teacher at Lakewood High School. As a business education teacher, Vicki worked with her students both inside and outside the classroom as a, and also Saturday School Monitor. Vicki's educational knowledge was also utilized as she participated in professional development opportunities regarding technology trends and changes and played a vital role with career technical, technical education curriculum writing. Vicki's expertise was also called upon as she assisted with administering the clerical position of the Civil Service Exam with the city of Lakewood. Vicki earned her, both her Bachelor's of Science in Business Education and her Master's in Business Administration from Cleveland State University. Thank you, Vicki. Lynn Pressler. Lynn first started her education career outside a school district when she worked with North Carolina's Meckenburg County Department of Health and also with the Discovery Place Science Museum in North Carolina. She returned to northeast Ohio and began working for the Cleveland Health Education Museum until she was hired as the health teacher in 1990 for both Horace Mann and Harding Middle Schools. Lynn walks the walk with her promoting good health by demonstrating her dedication to health education as she served in this role for her entire Lakewood career and retires from Garfield Middle School as a health educator. Lynn earned her education degree from The Ohio State University and a Master's Degree in Education with a focus on public health from the University of Toledo. Thank you, Lynn. Nancy Rawls. For nearly twelve years, starting with substitute teaching and working as an adult educator, education instructor, Nancy also began her working career by utilizing her home economics skills in the corporate world. But starting with the 1990-1991 school year, Nancy Rawls joined the Lakewood City School District as a home economics teacher at the high school, also dedicated to guiding students in their learning and growth. Nancy's education role evolved in Lakewood from classroom teacher to career development program coordinator, all the while participating in professional development workshops, curriculum writing to enhance career technical education, and mentoring novice teachers. Nancy earned both her Bachelor's of Science degree and Master's of Science degree, both from vocational education from Kent State University, and retires as an educator and leader in the Career Technical Education Department. Education Department. Thank you, Nancy. Dan Smith. Dan has a storied career that began teaching theology at St. Edwards High School for four years. After that role, Dan then was employed in corporate America for nearly 10 years with a consulting firm and then with a health career, a care agency. While dedicated to his professional career, Dan was also educating himself, earning various college degrees. Dan holds a bachelor's degree in philosophy and history from Borromeo College, a master's degree in theology from Gregoria University in Rome, Italy, a master's of business administration from Cleveland State University, and a master's degree in education from John Carroll University, where he earned his elementary teaching certificate. It was at the start of the 1999-2000 school year that Dan joined the teaching ranks, working with students identified as gifted at Emerson Middle School. Dan remained at Emerson until the two new middle schools opened, where he continued teaching at Garfield Middle School. Along with hundreds of students he taught through the years, Dan was also a very active part of LTA negotiations and the communications forum team. Thank you, Dan. Mary Pat Weiss. With a teaching career dedicated to primary children, having every opportunity to learn, Lakewood was fortunate to hire Mary Pat Weiss as a part-time, long-term substitute teacher in 1987 at Harrison Elementary School, after also serving as a day-to-day sub. After being one of 70 candidates that interviewed for a teaching position for the following school year, Mary Pat was hired as an elementary primary teacher at Grand Elementary School. After job sharing, being displaced from her school, working in a part-time contract, part-time LTS position, which actually was in place for Sandy Kozelka, who was on leave of absence, then returning to a part-time teaching contract by Mary Pat's choice, Mary Pat returned to full-time teaching at Lincoln Elementary at the start of the 2001-2002 school year, the building where she retires from at the end of the school year. Along with many semester hours of professional development, Mary Pat holds a bachelor's of science in education from Kent State University. Thank you. Tammy Zavatchan. After working nearly 20 years in the corporate world, Tammy began her career with the Lakewood City School District in late November 1996, when she became a substitute in the Nutrition Service Department. However, Tammy only remained a nutrition service substitute for just a few weeks. It was approximately two weeks later that Tammy applied, interviewed, and was hired to be a cafeteria worker at Lakewood High School in early December 1996. Tammy transitioned to Harding Middle School one year later in the same role, and after subbing as the leader at Harding for nearly a year, she was then permanently appointed to that position in the year 2000. She remained a cafeteria leader until her appointment to assistant to the nutrition services supervisor in 2007, a position she has held until her retirement at the end of this school year. Thank you, Tammy.
Thank you to everyone. I hear a lot of Garfield Middle School here. I'm wondering who's left after all of this. And you know, something else, as I read through this a couple different times, it's a reminder to kids that you don't always get the job you want the first time around. I heard a lot about you subbed. You wanted to be here, but you had to take other roles in order to get the jobs. That's something our students need to learn as they move on to their careers or college. So we would love a picture of this group.
That's a great group. It really is.
A lot of Lincoln, a lot of Garfield.
Yeah. A lot of Big Ten universities. There's a lot of Ohio State, a lot of Buckeyes, a few Penn Staters.
I asked Dan Smith when he came to be alone.
Yeah.
It's always fascinating. I knew there was me somebody.
I felt so bad not shaking hands, but I think it's the right thing to do. I mean...
There's a lot of chiefs over there, I think.
I think that's nice.
Okay. Families, if you want to get a picture also, feel free to get a picture of the group.
Hurting a bunch of teachers is like hurting ducks, right?
Just hold on. There's some other pictures. I think we have some other people coming to get a picture. They can, yeah, come up and get a picture if they want. So we have two other recognitions for this evening, and next I would like to call up Mr. Smith, acting principal at Garfield Middle School. He is here to speak about the Garfield, the 2022 Garfield star student.
Good evening. I would like to, first of all, welcome the Lakewood City School District Board of Education to Garfield Middle School. And Superintendent Nitzwicky, yes? Guest, welcome to our beautiful school. And at this time, I would like to call Brayton and his dad. Come on up. I'm calling dad up with him. You guys get to stand there while I talk about you, because this is all about you today. So that's what's most important. Brayton is our star student, and he is our star student because he came to us this year as a new student. And those of you seated in the audience know how challenging middle school can be. And he has come in here and made the adjustment to Lakewood City School District seamlessly. Came to us from Austintown, and we've been working on the vision of a Lakewood graduate, and he has embodied all of the qualities that we want to see. And he's done a great job in his classes. I believe he's gotten all A's, and I think he got one B in there early on in the year. But he has done a great job. He's playing football, and he is what we like to see. He has communicated with his peers. He's got a growth mindset. He's been empathetic. He's a critical thinker, does all the good stuff, and he's definitely got a global mindset because he moved and came to a new place. So we would like to take this time to say, first of all, it's a little late for this now, but welcome to Lakewood City School District. And we're looking forward to calling your name in a few years when you walk across the stage as a proud Lakewood graduate. And we'll hear your name also out on the football field a little bit too coming out. So congratulations. Good job, and we've had a wonderful year with you here. Thank you both.
Yeah, I was just going to say, congratulations. We're very lucky that you chose to come here. We're very privileged to have you, and your efforts are great. So thank you so much.
And finally, I would like to invite up our assistant superintendent, Mrs. Palumbo. We'll speak about this month's honorees for staff spotlight.
So we had two nominees this evening. Only one was able to be with us, so we will be recognizing tonight Mr. Jared Breggitzer. Jared, if you could join me up here? Taft Center for Innovation preschool teacher, Jared Breggitzer, has less than two years as a classroom teacher under his belt, but he already orchestrates his classroom like a pro. "Mr. B has the enthusiasm of a new teacher, but the craft of one that has been here for years," said librarian April Hoy, who makes weekly visits to Jared's classroom. April, Jared's nominator, notes in particular how Jared values his students' input despite their young age and marvels at how Jared makes his students a part of the process in creating their classroom environment. "I want to have the kids included in ways to change the class that reflects their interests," says Jared. "I want to encourage them to share their thoughts so they all feel heard." Jared blends both traditional and open-ended teaching methods and focuses on keeping his students engaged and curious. He encourages their curiosity with his Wonder Wall of Post-it notes, full of questions from topics that students wonder about. As much as practical, he listens to and adapts to their suggestions, such as wanting to build a drive-through restaurant during dramatic playtime, complete with cardboard cars. Just one of the many examples where Jared's hallmarks of collaboration, imagination, and enthusiasm shine through. I have a little bit of a story to share. At Taft, Mr. B invites all of us as administrators to read to his student group. So one day, Superintendent Nitzwicky was in reading to Mr. B's students, and she asked the student, she says, "How did you get so smart?" And one of the students says, "That guy." So Mr. B, please know that we delight in having you and your students with us at Taft. We thank you so much for all that you do for your students and your families and for the district as a whole. We appreciate you more than you know.
Can I call you Mr. B?
Sure.
This is just a recognition from the board, but we're so appreciative of everything you do. This is a newer program for us, so it's, you've done a fantastic job of kind of fleshing it out. And I see you, when I'm at the board on occasion at, or at Taft, and I see you with your kids and how happy they are to see you. And it's, you can tell that they're not unhappy. Which sometimes you see. But they're very happy with you, and I see you with them. And thank you so much from all of us. Would you like to say anything?
And we also have for Mr. B a certificate to the Ranger Shop at Lakewood High School.
So this completes the recognition portion of the superintendent's report. Anyone wishing to leave before we continue with regular board business, you may do so now. Thank you for coming and congratulations to everyone. Yes, we get started. I just want to say that concludes the superintendent report.
Thank you very much. Okay, we now move on to discussion of the agenda items for our, which we will be voting on at our next meeting. The first report is finance report, Ms. Petri-Barcelona.
Thank you very much, President Shaughnessy. You'll see, actually, we have no materials, but I would like to, just to make a note regarding finance, that due to the integration and conversion of the legacy payroll process to the new Tyler Munus system, the March monthly financial reports are delayed. So delayed, they will occur, they're just not here tonight. And the board will have the March and April financials presented for approval at the June board meeting.
Okay, great.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Next, we move on to building sites and major purchases. Ms. Beebe.
We have two items tonight. The first is an agreement between the board and ComDoc for document imaging equipment and managed print services, copiers, basically. And the district is taking advantage of a pricing opportunity from McCallis Group, who have been providing these services to us. They had an RFP go out. They've given us the best rate. And so our expiring contract concludes a 36-month lease at a rate of $17,846 a month. And the new cost is $15,267,000. The slower rate is due to the elimination of some unneeded printers and a decrease in therefore the number of copies available, but it is a savings to the district. The second item is an extension of an existing contract between Gardner and the Lakewood Board of Education to provide HVAC maintenance, this would be HVAC program, water treatment, building automation services, which began on July 1, 2020, and will continue on through June 30, 2023. So it's a two-year renewal. Sir Donahoe, anything to add to that?
You did very well.
Thank you, sir. But that's the building sites and major purchases for this week.
Thank you very much. Any questions? We now move on to the education report, Mrs. Katzenberger.
Thank you. The first item for consideration is the approval of the Lakewood High School 2022 graduating class. Superintendent recommends that the attached list of quote-unquote tentative candidates for graduation be approved. And so they sent us the list. So there's lots of fun things. And in looking at the list, I saw a bunch of repetitions. So I got into an email exchange with Mr. Walter and got a few facts about this class that I thought would be interesting to share. There's 296 students graduating. Forty of our graduating seniors will graduate with a 4.0 or higher GPA. Ninety-five seniors took at least one AP course this year for a total of 166 AP courses taken for the 21-22 school year by the class of 22. Twenty seniors took college credit plus off-campus this year, totaling 81 courses taken. Thirty-eight seniors took on-campus college credit plus courses, totaling 47 taken on-campus this year, for a grand total of 128 college credit plus courses taken by seniors. Plus courses taken by seniors. We had two National Merit Commended Scholars, one semifinalist and one finalist in the National Merit Scholarship Program. Fourteen of our students had received Lakewood Rocky River Rotary Scholarship Awards. We had countless artists and musicians and athletes who won state recognition and some who are moving on to national recognition, and lots of school records that are being set. And then to answer, we had four students with perfect attendance this year. And to answer my original question, we have seven sets of twins in the class of 22. So congratulations to everyone. There's also a resolution to adopt some instructional materials for a new environmental chemistry course. The courses, the book is, textbook is called Chemistry in Context, Context 2021, and we've ordered 80 copies of the textbook at the cost of $94.36 each. There's also a resolution to approve student handbooks. There's some, a few changes to those, updates. A resolution to adopt Lakewood High School algebra courses of study for the Lakewood City School District. They've been developed collaboratively by the Lakewood High School Social Math, Maddox Department and the Department of Teaching and Learning. And we were discussing as, how important that is, you know, beyond what we think of as math. It's a lot of teaching students how to solve problems, which are definite, like, skills that they will be carrying forward. There's a resolution to adopt the Lakewood High School Environmental Chemistry Course of Study, which, which is what the textbook was for. It's been developed collaboratively by the Lakewood High School Social Science Department and the Department of Teaching and Learning. And that gets into a lot of the things that we hear about in the news these days about, you know, greenhouse gases and even the effects of sunscreen and things that we use as consumers. And it really digs into the science, which I think sounds like a fascinating course. Let's see. There's an agreement between the Lakewood Board of Education and Healthcare Process Consulting, Inc. The district has been using the services of Healthcare Process Consulting, HPC, for the purposes of filing for Medicaid reimbursements for special education ancillary services through the Ohio Medicaid School Program. Approval of this agreement will allow HPC to continue to serve as our claims filing processor for three years from July of '22 to June 30 of 2025. The annual cost of this contract will be $27,500. There's a resolution to adopt the Memorandum of Understanding between the Lakewood Board of Education and Asian Services in Action, Inc. for the summer of 2022 EL Summer School. Lakewood City School District has been working with Asian Services in Action, Inc. to provide services to our EL students, English, English language students in summer school. This contract represents a continuation of academic support afforded to our students during the summer of 2021. In addition, opportunities for EL student teaching experiences are provided by partner organizations. Specific arrangements for programming were developed through conversation between Asia Inc. staff and our district personnel. And we also have a resolution to approve an out-of-state field trip, where the Lakewood High School's Travel Club is hitting the road, which is very exciting. They're going to broaden their vision of their world community through traveling to state and national parks in Nevada, Utah, and Arizona. During the seven-day trip, students will visit the Valley of Fire State Park, Coral Pink Sand Dunes State Park, Zion National Park, Bryce Canyon National Park, and the South Rim of the Grand Canyon National Park. Students will also tour the Hoover Dam Power Plant and experience a rafting expedition, excursion on the Colorado River. Sounds wonderful. Memorandum of Understanding between College Now Greater Cleveland and Lakewood High School. Contracting with College Now provides a vital position at Lakewood High School serving college-bound students. Mrs. Sandoval, the College Now counselor assigned to LHS, helps students apply for financial aid, secure waivers for application fees and admission testing fees, publishes a scholarship bulletin, helps students navigate the college selection process. This program will be funded jointly by the Lakewood Ranger Education Foundation and Lakewood City Schools at the rate of $450 per day for 100 days. Neighboring private schools enjoy a full-time guidance counselor for this purpose. Lakewood High School is contracted with College Now for more than a decade. When the district cut these funds prior to the 2010-2011 academic year, the LHS Alumni Foundation, which has now become the Lakewood Ranger Education Foundation, or LREF, secured a $100,000 gift from alumni in New York City to continue this program. In December 2011, they received a $50,000 gift from another alumni family. LREF will continue to work to secure funding for this position. Logistically, the district enters into the contract and pays the contract. LREF is invoiced by the school district and reimburses the district for its portion of the expense. We also have two gifts to our schools. Brad Swartz donated a Mendini full-size violin for use by the middle and elementary students in the orchestra program. And on behalf of Lakewood Garden Club, President Linda Grandstaff donated $500 for the purchase of materials and supplies for the outdoor horticulture learning lab. And that concludes the voluminous education report.
Thank you. A lot of good things in that report. That trip sounds marvelous.
I have a question.
I think they need to take at least one Board of Education member.
Right.
Yes, Ms. Beebe.
How many days a month or a week? Do, are we have 100 days for College Now? Is that enough? Do we, is that something we should look at as a board, saying that, you know, to, to, to work with LCRF to maybe up the number of days?
Sure, so I know that-
180 school days, so we've only got College Now for 100 of those.
And that's in assistance with our other counselors we also have at the school. And so I know that we've asked for the last couple of years and, and they have provided us a report of how many students at the end of the year they do service. So we continue to look at that to decide if we need more or not. We'll continue to look about.
Because we cut it originally when there was really financial difficulty in the district. And we've always acknowledged that it's a valuable program, so.
President Shaughnessy, I have a question if I may. Superintendent Nitzwicki, I, I see that the, having reviewed the handbook draft that is, that was in our materials, I see that the typical signs of COVID, with the exception of a fever, are eliminated as a reason to keep, keep children home, if I read that correctly. And I'm curious if there was any discussion about, or consideration of encouraging home tests for those who might display one symptom that wouldn't in and of itself prevent you from coming to school. And I say this as I'm the one here wearing a mask, as my family very, very recently has dealt with COVID. And it was, it was two things. The notice of exposure that led us to then test a child who otherwise had a sniffle, that we would have, you know, normal circumstances, send that kid, send that child to, to, to school. However, putting those two things together, the test allowed us, unfortunately getting a positive result, allowed us as a family to change our behavior and potentially expose fewer folks and kind of keep, hopefully, you know, that, that kind of kept things contained. So I ask that question in that context, having experienced that recently, about, about the handbook.
Sure, so we did institute our form online for staff and students, students' families to report potential cases. And then our district nurse and her staff are very good about reaching out to the families, talking through the different symptoms, and offering suggestions for taking a COVID test if necessary.
Thank you.
Does that help?
Well, I, I would, I would just certainly, I guess if we're saying to families that, again, that, that some of the typical symptoms of COVID are not a reason to keep your child home necessarily, perhaps that handbook could say, could recommend an at-home test in, in those circumstances. Perhaps something to consider.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional? Okay. Policy, we have no policies to consider at this time. Expect we'll be getting a big pile at some point.
We do have a very big pile, I believe. Ms. Nav will be reaching out for those dates of meeting in the next couple of weeks.
Look forward to it. The next item is Human Resources and Community Services Report. Mr. Callahan, please.
Thank you, President Shaughnessy. We have for our action at our next meeting before us, the following certified, a total of 195 actions. They include one unpaid leave of absence, 17 awards of continuing contracts. Included, there are 95 appointments of certified personnel to one-year contracts. There are 78 certified special compensations, and then four salary and pay rate adjustments under certified. And then, under certified non-employee coach-advisors, there's one appointment. Under classified staff, we have a total of nine actions, two appointments, six special compensations, one salary and pay rate adjustment. We also have three actions under classified non-employee coaches-advisors, those are appointments. And finally, community recreation and education, there are 24 actions, 14 in aquatics, as the summer swim season is approaching, one event staff, one field maintenance, and eight under programs. And that concludes that report.
Okay, and we will be acting on those at our next meeting. We now move on to other board business. Mr. Callahan, I think at least the first two of these are yours.
Thank you again. And we are being asked to approve on one reading, a certified resignation this evening. And that does require a roll call vote, considering we are being asked to approve it on one reading. And so I would move adoption there.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded that we act on one reading for this certified resignation. May we have a roll call?
Ms. Shaughnessy.
Aye.
Mr. Callahan.
Aye.
Ms. Beebe.
Aye.
Ms. Pete Barcelona.
Aye.
Ms. Katzenberger.
Aye.
Thank you. And if I may, the next item is under classified here, and it is one retirement, which again, we are being asked to approve on one reading, hence a roll call vote. And I would move approval there as well.
Second.
Resolution's been moved and seconded, as it's on one reading. Roll call, please, Mr. Zeeman.
Ms. Shaughnessy.
Aye.
Mr. Callahan.
Aye.
Ms. Beebe.
Aye.
Ms. Pete Barcelona.
Aye.
Ms. Katzenberger.
Aye.
Thank you.
And the resolution carries. We now move on to revision to fixing the date and place of a regular board meeting, and this would be Ms. Petri-Barcelona.
Thank you very much. This is just for first reading, so we'll vote on it next meeting. But just noting that we are revising the date and place of the regular Board of Education meetings for 2022, but not all of them. We are just not going to conduct our meeting scheduled at this point for June 6. And then additionally, our meeting scheduled for June 20 actually finds itself on the Juneteenth holiday, so we will be moving that meeting. So with that, our changes include canceling June 6, canceling June 20, but then rescheduling June 20 to Tuesday, June 21. So we will have one regular meeting that month. So you have that information before you. And also, I guess of note, because of this, in, in addition to this change, it's just noting that, that June 19 will be considered a holiday for all 11- and 12-month employees.
So that motion's been moved?
And seconded.
And seconded, and this is on one reading?
No, this is just first reading.
Okay.
We vote on it next time.
Then we're good.
Yeah, so.
Thank you.
Just for consideration next time.
And I believe you have the next one as well.
Indeed, and this one is going to be on one reading. So we have before us a resolution to approve an agreement between the Lakewood City Schools and Future Think LLC. I'm going to say a little bit about it, and then I'll make, make the motion officially. So this is a request on one reading, and this is for, should we approve this, this is for the district to engage Future Think to lead a, an enrollment study. The last one, I don't know if we have that written down, but it was, it was over a decade ago, right?
2012.
That we did, thank you. So it's, it's been a while, and it's about time for us, in light of new information and where we are right now. And this, in this case, Future Think will provide a 10-year enrollment projection by grade by school for us, as well as an overdue, overview of the entire district, considering things like current and future housing development, population trends, birth counts, migration patterns. This agreement before us is, the proposal is for $17,000. So I move approval of this and request roll call vote for one reading.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve this on one reading. Are there any questions? Or I know this was out for bid. Was there, or we got several bids? And as I look through this, I see that extensive experience in doing this sort of work, including in our area of northeast Ohio, so. Any other comments? Okay.
Ms. Shaughnessy.
Aye.
Mr. Callahan.
Aye.
Ms. Beebe.
Aye.
Ms. Pete Barcelona.
Aye.
Ms. Katzenberger.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Resolution carries. We now move on to our communications portion of our meeting. I would first ask Ms. Nitzwicki or Mr. Zeeman if they have received anything. Okay. And how about board members?
We've received some questions from our community regarding some of the resolutions that are being addressed at the Ohio General Assembly, specifically House Bills 322, 327, and 616, all of which have a potential disruptive effect on our school community, our teachers' ability to do their work, and just kind of don't align with what we have expressed as our values as a school, community, and Lakewood. To, just to briefly touch on them, House Bill 322 seeks to prohibit the teaching of prohibitive, prohibited, prohibited concepts such as systemic racism, gender identity and fluidity, and even current events in Ohio's K-12 schools. House Bill 327 seeks to prohibit the teaching of divisive concepts such as discrimination on the basis of race or sex in pre-K school, pre-K 12 schools. And they, that bill includes threats to teacher licenses and state school funding. And House Bill 616 seeks to restrict how schools talk about sexual orientation and gender identity, including threats to teacher licenses and school funding for folks who don't comply. So we as a board are working, and with the administration, on a resolution to express our opposition to this kind of legislation, and that will be made public when we're, we have a draft that's approved, so.
I've had contact from a parent who is working on a petition parallel to this, looking at the school community itself and, and seeing if they can get a resolution or petition together to maybe go down simultaneous with us.
Well, and also, it's a good attempt to encourage citizens that calling your legislature, calling and writing and texting and emailing, all the things, your legislators is really important if you have strong feelings about these kinds of bills.
So we are moving ahead on this. We want to be thoughtful about it. And so we're taking just an extra week or two, but I think we're all, we've all spoken publicly about the need to maintain our local district authorities. Anything else? Any other? Okay. The only notes I've received have been in regard to this issue and the need to address it, so thank you very much. So we now move to the public. Just for anyone who doesn't know this, we love to hear from public. You have about three minutes to speak, and if, when you would give us your name and address before you speak. I see one person who signed up to speak, Kim Camfield. However, I don't see that person. Ms. Nav, any additional signups? Okay, great. Thank you. And we are always happy to hear from people, so don't be intimidated. That would be it. Is there any other board business that someone would care to bring up?
No.
Nope. Then may I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All papers signed by by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And we adjourn. Thank you all for coming.